Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to be made by the Canadian Volunteer Fire Service and Mark Pam from, where is it? Kentville Fire Department, going to present the award tonight.
It's truly an honor to stand here before you today on behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association to present one of the most prestigious recognitions of our organization, the Lifetime Achievement Award. This year, we are proud to celebrate an exceptional individual whose dedication, service, and leadership have left an indelible mark on the volunteer fire service community. Please join me in congratulating the 2024 recipient, Reed Wynott, of the Bridgewater Fire Department.
Reed's career in the fire service is nothing short of extraordinary.
With 50 years of service, his unwavering commitment to protecting his community and mentoring the next generation of firefighters embodies the very spirit of volunteerism. Reed has not only responded to countless emergencies, but has also been instrumental in shaping the culture of safety, camaraderie, and excellence within the Bridgewater Fire Department. Throughout his tenure, Reed has demonstrated a passion for sharing his knowledge and expertise. From training new recruits to enhancing operational protocols, he's ensured that the legacy of the Bridgewater Fire Department is one of resilience and readiness. His mentorship has inspired many to follow in his footsteps, fostering a stronger, more connected fire service community. Reed's contributions extend beyond his department. His leadership and advocacy for volunteer fire service have made a lasting impact on our collective mission to safeguard communities across Canada. He exemplifies what it means to serve selflessly, and his dedication reminds us all why we choose this path. We would like to express our sincere gratitude to Makita for their support of this award. As a valued partner, Makita's commitment to recognizing the outstanding contributions of individuals like Reed is a testament to their belief in the power of community and volunteerism. Their sponsorship ensures that we can continue to honor those who have given so much to protect and serve. All the tools on the table are donation from Makita to the recipient's department. Reed, as you accept this Lifetime Achievement Award, know that your impact reaches far beyond the walls of your firewall. Your leadership, dedication, and compassion have touched countless lives, and your legacy will inspire future generations of volunteer firefighters. This is the first year that we'll be giving a large coin for Reed to keep, and it's got his name engraved on it with the year, as well as now, this is one of only 15 coins like this, a keeper coin or pocket coin that he can have as well. On behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association, the Bridgewater Fire Department, and the many communities you have served, thank you for extraordinary service. Congratulations, Reed, on this well-deserved recognition. Please join me in a round of applause as we celebrate the remarkable achievements of Reed Wynott.
Glad to see everybody's here.
I just, well, first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out to this on our birthday, 125 years. It's something quite special for the town. And I want to thank the South Shore Stamp Club for this stamp cancellation, right? Is that the pictorial stamp cancellation?
Yes.
I have in my pocket the last one that I keep in my office at Town Hall from 2017, where we had the one for Bitchanewispa Park, which also has the nice stamp on it for the park. So I have a couple of these that are on display, so whenever I'm meeting with developers or business people interested in coming to our town to start a new business, this is one of the things they see. And so to mark our 125th birthday with another, I find these, obviously they're unique, but they're also very special. I think it's very, so thank you all for putting this together and for being here today.
Anyways, thank you, everybody, for coming for Bridgewater 125. And the Philatelic Society has asked us to produce a cancellation commemorating this event, so which we have done, and it's turned out with very positive reviews. And Canada Post is really pleased to be involved with supporting Philatelic Society and Bridgewater. So, of course, it's just been a great time. So the council is officially released as of right now, and please take part in some of the festivities. We have coffee, tea, donuts, anything you folks like. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for all that from the, yeah.
Yeah. I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and as always, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is our privilege to be here. Agenda has been circulated. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Some of these, Council Wyntott, seconded by Council Fergier, all those in favor. Agenda is approved. Thank you. Announcements from council. Anything upcoming? No?
Quite a bunch.
Quiet bunch. You know, I thought you'd have something about the Jays, but after the last couple of days, no, maybe not. A week ago, I would have. Yeah. Well, then I'll just make a quick announcement, of course, for our Patrick Hurdle, our dear Patrick Hurdle, who is leaving for the region of Queens. This will be his last, basically, running the livestream for the council meeting, so let me just express from the bottom of my heart our gratitude and thanks for all that you've done for the town, your time as a councillor, but also in this role and keeping us on track and dealing with all the IT issues and the bridge and the evening post, like all the things that you do. Big shoes to fill, you will be missed, but we're very happy for you, very proud of you in taking on this new role, and I know that you'll do well. It is not goodbye. We will see you in the region as we partner more and more with the region of Queens, which is a change that we've seen over the last, you know, six or seven months with some new leadership there. So looking forward to collaborating in a different way, so, yeah, thanks.
Neil, didn't you cry?
Okay, perfect.
David, oh, sorry, Mayor Mitchell.
Keep it humble.
That one was hard to follow up, but I don't want to forget that we have Beautiful Bridgewater coming up on October 25th.
Yes.
At the Woodland Gardens. It is a very anticipated event every year. There's pumpkin carving from 1:00 to 5:00, magical pumpkin path contest from 5:00 to 8:15, and the Glow Walk starts at 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM. There's some great prizes. There's an outdoor movie as well, starting at 6:30.
I think it's Goonies, too.
It is Goonies, yeah, yeah. And donations will be accepted for pro kids. So it's a great event every year, very well attended, so come on out and join us.
Awesome, thank you for that. Yes, other announcements? All right, moving on, we have the minutes of September 22nd and September 29th, the special virtual council meeting. Any errors or omissions with those? Council Newell?
I do believe for the virtual minutes for motion 25-194, there is no moved or seconded by. I assume there's supposed to be someone there. I do not see a move or a second by.
All right.
Oh, here, okay.
But we will amend those.
Yep.
Oh, for motion 25-19.
Okay.
So we'll have to look at the recording to get that?
Yeah, okay.
So we can defer that?
We'll defer that one. That was the 29th, right? So we'll just look for a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd, please. Council Newell, thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald, all those in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. And we are down to 10.1, draft MOU for South Shore Housing Transition Association. Donna, freshly back from representing the town overseas, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate, always appreciate when we go away to learn about what's happening, but also during my time in Cunio, Italy, learning about how much we have to contribute to conversations with our international cities who are members of that organization as well, so. So I am now home for a total of 30 hours. Grateful that this item is at the top of the agenda this evening, as I still deal with jet lag. So I'll take you through this and bear with me along the way. So this evening, folks, we're bringing to you a recommendation regarding the South Shore Transition House Association's request for a memorandum of understanding for PID number 60023298, which is our 14-acre parcel of property on York Street, which also connects to Cook, Cook Road. Yeah. So our recommendation coming forward to you is that the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater direct the CIO to enter into an MOU with the South Shore Transition House Association to allow them to undertake a pre-development site assessment for a proposed residential development on that PID, and that the period of exclusivity for the MOU be four months effective upon signing of the agreement. The background associated with this recommendation to you is that the South Shore Transition House Association is a nonprofit community provider of community services for survivors of gender-based violence, offering emergency housing and support services. Their current facility, Harbor House, is a five-bedroom, 15-bed transition house in Bridgewater, which has recently been displaced due to building conditions. In a proposal that they presented to you in camera earlier in these past months, they are proposing a 33-unit housing development, which may include 21 units being deeply affordable and 12 units being closer to market rentals. They've also identified that they have a number of support programs that they can tap into and leverage to facilitate this development. Based on their site selection criteria and in their assessment and looking around the town, which is their preference against their criteria is to be within the town limits and central to a variety of services, they had identified this property on York Street that is owned by us as a solid potential site for this development. Having identified that, there are a number of questions that they have to undertake as a part of that preliminary site assessment to determine if a portion of that parcel or in its entirety may be suitable for this development. And there's a list of items that they need to work through just to assess whether or not this site is appropriate for this kind of a development. Those are listed in this report, but they do include the Phase 1 assessments, including environmental site assessment, potentially a Phase 2 assessment of the landscape applicable, but geotechnical, boundary and topographical surveys, et cetera, for that property. And then, of course, addressing the wastewater management components to that location, et cetera. So those are listed there for you. The site and the intention at this time is quite simply to provide the organization with a four-month exclusive period of time to assess the site. There are no direct costs to the town. This is, all costs associated with the studies will be borne by the association. That information, as they gather it, will belong to them as they conduct their assessment and determine whether or not the cost to proceed, including provisioning of streets, servicing, et cetera, along with the site development itself, is a part of that process. So, is to allow them the opportunity to proceed with that assessment. Council has identified in the past that this particular parcel of property, you expressed interest in having it rezoned from a light industrial to residential, so it does fit within that capacity. And you certainly have identified, within our strategic priorities, a variety of housing needs and looking at affordable housing components. So you do have that as your framework. The four months is a period of exclusivity, and appreciating that we had had an alternate proponent express interest in the property, it was not specifically for housing. So again, this aligns at this time. It doesn't mean there aren't other opportunities, but specifically in alignment with this request for an MOU for a four-month window to assess. They will then return back to council based on that assessment with a proposed purchase and sale. If they, assessing the property that this sounds, it's run through the reports positively, at that time, they can return to council with an offer for purchase and sale, or perhaps it's declining to even proceed further. So you have no obligation at this time, it's simply to provide that period of assessment.
Questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
In number five, it outlines some of the studies and reports involved. Do we, does that need to be in there? Do we need to prescribe to them what studies and reports need to be done, or am I misunderstanding what it's asking for?
So, the number five clause, she's, thank you, Deputy Mayor. You're referencing number five within the draft proposed, or sorry, the draft memorandum of understanding. Those are the items that have been identified by the association that they want to undertake. And as it says, they will undertake these elements as needed, and the list could be expanded. But again, these are their pieces to be undertaken during that four months to vet it for themselves, to determine whether or not this is a viable location for this project.
Other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor, yeah?
There's nothing about insurance or our liability in there. Should there be something to kind of indemnify us or make or require that any companies working on the property are insured?
Absolutely. Addendum Schedule B, within that proposed MOU, you will find a collection, quite a lengthy collection of requirements. Again, these have been vetted through our insurance, et cetera, to get clarity. Again, this is third party. We have a procedure for ourselves when we are contracting with suppliers. This is an extension. We want no liability associated with the town, and so therefore, there are at least, let me see, we go through to eight items.
There's four, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of things on.
Yeah, so including contractors, pollution liability, should something happen on the site and being, again, everything to protect us, should something, not anticipating it will, but insurance and all these elements are there just to protect all parties involved. Yes. So it has been extensively reviewed in conjunction with our team, and there may be a couple of just wording tweaks and verifications just to ensure that the property, as some of the site, the geotechnical components are being done, there might be some disruption of the soils, but again, ensuring that it isn't a clear cutting to support this. So all of those guidelines have been put in place, and we'll be monitoring those during that period. But it certainly has been reviewed in conjunction with the association, and they have agreed to the terms of the MOU and the requirements that we've put in place.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater direct the CIO to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the South Shore Transition House Association, attached as document 25-117C, to allow them to undertake a pre-development site assessment for a proposed residential development of PID 60023298, and that the period of exclusivity for the MOU be four months effective upon signing of the agreement.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to 10.2, looking for approval for amendment to policy nine, trees and tree limb removal. So it's just a housekeeping item, removing a sentence there that references a tree committee that doesn't exist. So I don't, it's pretty explanatory. Yeah. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Thank you, Council Fergier, thank you.
Your worship. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the amendments to policy nine, trees and limb removal to remove the last sentence in section two that references the tree committee.
Thank you, seconded by Council Caldwell. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Moving right along, down to new business, we have the building report for September. So again, a very busy year, exceeding last year's year-to-date totals. So staff are busy with that, and the town is busy with lots of development. We also have the Limburg County Senior Safety Report for the month of September, and unfortunately, busy and continued to be busy, but doing some incredible work there. Down to 11.3, professional services Town Hall Condition Assessment Award. Mr. Davidson?
Good evening. Council approved the funding for, in the 25-26 capital budget for facility condition assessment and space needs assessment for the Town Hall. This initiative aligns with the strategic priorities identified in early 2024, which supports the, an informed maintenance plan as well as long-term planning for the building. We followed a competitive RFP process. Five proposals were received and evaluated. Architecture 49 emerged to be the top-ranked proponent with the highest overall score as well as the lowest quoted price of $52,977.46 net HST. Staff recommended, are recommending an additional $2,500 net HST for indoor air quality monitoring and radon testing, bringing the total cost to the project of $55,477.46 net HST, approximately $5,500 over budget to be covered by operational reserves. The assessment will include a comprehensive review of the building systems as part of the condition assessment, and a space needs analysis for future planning and updates the town's asset management plan. We expect the project to be completed by the end of March. Staff do recommend the award of this project to Architecture 49 with the additional testing allowance.
Okay, questions? The Town Year, Council Newell?
First, I noticed in, I noticed that initially it looks like Architecture 49 didn't submit a bid for the environmental assessment, so did that come in after the fact for the $2,500?
So when we reviewed their RFP, they actually included most of what we asked for. So we're just ensuring that there are sufficient funds for both the indoor air quality and the radon testing. We believe it's included, but maybe not to the level we need, so.
So that's to cover the difference?
Yeah.
Okay. At this point. And I guess my follow-up question, I just noticed Architecture 49, while I love saving money, is pretty substantially less than some of these other quotes. Do we have any concerns about that? Because some of these are, that's a pretty big difference.
Certainly, so that is, the prices of the evaluation, the price is submitted and their scope of work did cause, you know, that's our immediate thing we saw as well. But they covered all the aspects of the RFP in terms of the scope of work, so we have no reason not to award it to them. And again, other than the, looking at the indoor air quality and radon testing, they covered all the aspects of the RFP.
So just as a follow-up to that, if I may, do we have any repercussions if the work isn't the standard we expect? Just hypothetically.
The, well, the staff will be expecting a report that covers everything in the RFP, and if they don't cover the RFP, they don't get picked.
Yeah.
Oh, I needed. That's one's perfect, that's perfect.
Other questions or comments? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Newell, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the award of RFP 2025-05 Professional Services Town Hall Condition and Space Needs Assessment to Architecture 49 at $52,977.46 net HST, with the inclusion of the indoor air quality and radon testing as part of the assessment scope for a cost of $2,500 net HST for a total cost of $55,477.46 net HST, with the budget overage of $5,477.46 to be funded through operational reserves.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to 11.4, wastewater treatment plant digester gas blower supply and install, another tender.
Another ten. So this year's budget included the new digester gas blower system to be installed and the area around it being classified for that service. So a defined area where the blower will be housed safely. The project is to ensure safe and efficient delivery of combustible biogas to the plant's new boiler, improving energy efficiency and compliance with the hazardous area standards. Following a competitive tendering process, Filtrum submitted the lowest compliant bid of $385,828.76 net HST, which does exceed our approved budget of $300,000 by just over almost $86,000. Talking with the Director of Finance, the additional funds are proposed to be drawn from the wastewater reserves. Filtrum, the lowest compliant bid, has a proven track record with the town. They've completed, recently completed successful wastewater projects, wastewater treatment plant projects, and staff are recommending the award of tender to them. We expect completion in early spring. Now, council may defer the project to next fiscal year so that we can have sufficient funds, but this could result in higher future costs or uncertain contractor availability. So staff are recommending the award, tender award to Filtrum and perceive the project using the reserve funds to cover the budget overage.
Thank you. We don't generally see costs go down in the future, so, yeah, I don't know if there's any questions from council on this. If not, someone prepared to make a motion? Council Newell?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater award tender number 210834.03 to Filtrum Inc. for the construction and procurement of all equipment and several works associated with the wastewater treatment plant, degeist?
Digest.
Digestor, my apologies. Gas blower project at a total cost of $385,828.76 net HST, $423,510 full HST, with a budget overage of $85,828.76 to be funded from the wastewater reserve.
Thank you, seconded by Council Wyntott. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. That was a quick meeting.
20 minutes?
Yep, someone marked that on my little sheet. But it's.